Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to day two of the First Asian Oncology Society Conference. The first lecturer is an AOS special session on clinical trials for cancer. Our session chair, Professor Chikashi Ishioka, is the director of the Cancer Center and vice president of the Tohoku University Hospital. He is also the president of the Japanese Society of Medical Oncology. His main research interests include chemotherapy of gastrointestinal cancers and translational research, such as the development of biomarker for colorectal cancer and breast cancer through multiomics analysis of cancer tissues. May I call on Dr. Chikashi Ishioka to introduce our first lecturer?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Chikashi Ishioka, Chairperson of Japanese Society of Medical Oncology, just one. And I am a medical oncologist working at Tohoku University Hospital, Saint Mary's, Japan. This session titled Clinical Trials for Cancer is one of the keynote session of the AOS 2020. Today, we have invited three excellent speakers to this session. First speaker is Professor Yun Jun Ban, who is a president of Biomedical Research Institute and Director of Clinical Trial Center of Seoul National University Hospitals. He was previously president of the Korean Cancer Study Group and Chairperson of Korea Association for Clinical Oncology. Today, he will talk about future of cancer clinical trials as a keynote lecture. Second speaker is Professor Jung Hyun Khan. He is the chief of Division of Medical Oncology at the Seoul Saint Mary's Hospital, the Catholic University of Korea. He was also president of Cancer Study Group of Seoul, Korea, South Korea, and his specialty is lung cancer, head and neck cancer, and melanoma. Today, he will talk about evolution of clinical study design in precision medicine era. And final speaker is Parvish Park, Professor Parvish Park, who is the group oncology director of Medical Oncology, Shelby Cancer and Research Institute, and Shelby March Specialty Hospitals at Mumbai, India. He is also director of Precision Oncology and Research Asian Cancer Institute. Also, he was a past president of Indian Society of Medical and Pediatric Oncology. His presentation today is focusing on insights and lessons from Asian clinical trials. So let's start the session from the keynote direction. Professor Yun Jun Ban, could you start your presentation, please?
Good afternoon, my colleagues. My name is Young Jun Bang, a medical oncologist in Seoul. It is my great honor to present at the Asian Oncology Society Conference. Today, I'm going to speak on feature of cancer clinical trials. Okay. As medical oncologists, our job started with cytotoxic chemotherapy. Principles and algorithm of clinical trials have been established with each agents. About 20 years ago, we've got a new weapon called targeted agent. Targeted agents are more selective for certain types of cancer, and trials for these agents should be different from those for cytotoxic agents. The most important feature of targeted agent is that we can target the optimal population by using predictive biomarkers. If we conduct a trial comparing treatment A and B, and age better than B, then afterwards, all patients are treated with A. However, please note that patients in the shaded area will respond to B, not A. This was the big fault of so-called population oncology. With cytotoxic agent, we had no biomarkers for patient selection. With the targeted agent, we have the predictive biomarkers. Here is simulation study in which a new agent improves patient's survival by five-fold in biomarker-positive patient, and the biomarker frequency is around 10%. If we conduct a trial involving 668 unselected patients, as you can see, we have a negative result with a P value of 0.16. We have another scenario. If we select the study population with the biomarker, we need just 16 patients to get the positive result. This simulation study shows the big benefit of patient enrichment using predictive biomarkers. In 2005, two global gastric cancer trials were activated. One was Toga Study, in which patient was selected for HER2. The other was Avagas Study, in which all comers were ignored. As we know, Toga Study was positive and Avagas was negative. Now, we have a third weapon, that is immunotherapy. Especially immune checkpoint inhibitors are effective in various cancers. At this time, seven checkpoint inhibitors, one anti-cytocytic four and six anti-PD1 or PDL1 antibodies were approved by FDA for more than 10 types of cancer. We have also different class of immunocancer agent. As of August 2019, more than 3,800 agents are in development. Please note that number of cell therapy is increasing very rapidly over two years. And anti-PD1 or PDL1 antibodies are combined with many kinds of agents, including anti-cytocytic antibodies, chemotherapy, anti-angiogenic agent, and so on. Combination of chemotherapy and immune checkpoint inhibitors are more effective than either agent alone in several types of tumors. In advanced gas cancer, combination of chemotherapy and nebulumab was better than chemotherapy alone in terms of overall and progression-free survival in PDL1, CPS5, or greater patients. Noble immune checkpoint modulators are also combined with anti-PD1 or PDL1 antibodies. In this randomized phase two study for PDL1-positive non-small cell lung cancer, combination of anti-C antibodies plus a tesoralizemab significantly improved objective response rate and progression-free survival compared to a tesoralizemab alone. It is true that a number of cancer clinical trials increasing very rapidly. In 2018, 2,300 new trials were launched. One of the biggest issue today is that we have too many new agents to be tested. It becomes more difficult to recruit patients. Timelines get longer, cost escalates rapidly, and RND efficiency drops. We have to find ways to shorten timelines, increase productivity, and reduce cost of clinical trials. We know that drug development approach is not sustainable any longer. We need to reshape the future clinical trials. It is very clear that adoption of digital technology in clinical trial is increasing very rapidly. COVID-9 pandemic is catalyzing this process. With digitalization, the acquisition and quality of data is improved. The trial process can be more flexible. Patient adherence is improved, and the trial efficiency will be improved. This will lead to conduct of decentralized clinical trial ultimately. The trials are becoming more patient-centered. Cancer clinical trials are getting more complex and demanding, and patient burden is increasing with the slower patient recruitment and increasing dropout rate. The intent of patient-centered trial is to lessen the burden of patients and to improve patient enrichment and adherence. For example, we can see patient input in informed consent forms, and we can build patient-friendly protocols. Environment of patient, the design and conduct of clinical trials can be very diverse, as shown in this figure. Application of precision medicine or the use of predictive biomarker is the cornerstone of the current and future clinical trials. This part will be covered by Professor Khan in details later. I want to just make one comment here. For immunocancer agent, the precision medicine is also being applied. In regard to immune checkpoint inhibitors, we already have three predictive biomarkers. That is microsatellite instability status, tumor mutational bud, and PDL1 expression. We can use these biomarkers for patient selection. We already know that MSI high tumors respond to immunocancer drugs very well, and this has related to the tissue agonistic approval of anti-PD1 antibody pembrolizemab. Finally, we are evolving innovative and adaptive trial designs. Adaptive designs allow for prospectively planned modification to the trial design based on accumulating data from subject in the trial. This is the schematic description of adaptive design. During the conduct of trial, you can modify the path of trial design depending on the outcomes of patient in order. Adaptive designs can be used for early-phase trials or for late-phase trials. And SIMNIS designs are also frequently employed. Today, I will cover several frequently used adaptive designs. SIMNIS Phase 1 to Design, or Phase 1 Trial with Multiple Expansive Cores, is commonly used these days. This trial model consists of dose escalation part to determine the maximum toxic dose or biological active dose, safety, and pharmacokinetics, followed by multiple expensive cores to see early signal of efficacy. The best example would be keynote 001 study with pembrolizemab. As you can see, the dosage schedule of pembrolizemab was determined in the dose escalation part. And the activity of this drug was tested in multiple cores of melanoma and non-small cell lung cancer. This first instrument trial was started in 2011, and the drug received accelerated FDA approval for melanoma in 2014. It was just three years. Biomarker enrichment design is sometimes employed. In this randomized phase two trial of olaparibin parklytuxel, in advanced gas cancer, the half of patient had ATM-negative tumors, while the actual frequency of ATM-negative gas cancer is around 14%. Therefore, the study population was enriched for biomarker-positive patients. In this study, the benefit of olaparibin was much greater in ATM-negative patients, as expected. However, this was not confirmed by the subsequent Phase 3 trial. Platform trial is also popular these days. This is a kind of master trial in a single disease to study multiple investigational agent. With the agent allowed to either enter or leave the platform on the basis of a decision algorithm. The first and the best example is Ispite trial for new adjuvant treatment of locally advanced breast cancer. For HER2-negative breast cancer, patients are randomized to the control arm of parklytuxel and AC, or one of multiple experimental arms. Please note that any new experiment arm can be added at any time. This is the timeline for Ispite trial, which started in 2010. Up to now, 16 agents completed evaluation, and three agents received accelerated approval. Finally, I'll cover briefly on complex innovative trial as defined as designs that are intended to advance and modernize drug development. There is no fixed definition for complex innovative designs, since what is considered innovative and noble today will change over time. At this time, six types of trials are considered innovative, including the use of real-world data and so on. In summary, future cancer clinical trials will include trial digitalization, patient-centric approaches, application of precision medicine, and the use of more innovative and adaptive designs. Thank you.
Everybody, thank you for the invitation for the ICOS meeting. And I'd like to have a presentation of the evolution of the cancer study design in the precision medical era. And first, I'd like to introduce the precision medicine evolving clinical trials. Science and technology unmask numerous genetic regulations that are common across the multiple cancer types, which leads to the development of drugs targeting the drives in operation, irrespective of the primary tumor site. The immunotherapy marks in the ground breaking my phone for the cancer treatment, and many immunocancer agents in the drug developments continue to run. Approval of novel agents based on the data from the Phase 1 trial led to unprecedented evolutionary design of the early-stage clinical trials. Recently, FDA has approved the 10 anti-cancer drugs, which are the match to the companion biopsy biomarkers based on the data from the non-randomized trials in the last two years. And safe in a phase 1, always sign of efficacy in a phase 2, the evaluations against the standard treatment in a randomized phase 2 clinical trial, the vast traditional drug development track has gradually faded out. The currently, rare Phase 1 dose escalation trial, followed by the large expansion cohort, and new trials such as adaptive studies with the basket ambires designs aimed at optimizing the biomarker drop co-development process. Precision cancer medicine came from the accumulated evidence of the matching target agent with the tumor marker aberrations, which was designed to interact with the predictive biomarkers, resulting in the highest improvement in the response rate and survival. Large-scale collaborative human genome sequencing project facilitated understanding the genetic interpatient-patient tumor heterogeneity in the multiple cancers. Most probable genomic aberrations are present only in the small portion of patients, which is emphasized, multi-center collaboration in the early drug developments. However, intra-patients, intra-tumor heterogeneity, and the core evolutions under the treatment pressures are major after those in the precision cancer medicine. Heterogeneity in the genomic profiles, particularly applied to the bystander mutations and driving events, are usually present in the majority of subcones from the primary tumors, as well as metastatic region. The patients believe that the lead regimen is targeting drug genomic attrition with high variant frequency can provide a substantial tumor responses. Because the clinical response to the targeted agent is consistently aggregated by drug resistance, the repeated tumor biopsy of course reasons and characterization of the separating tumor cells and the separate tumor DNA became the importance, which allowed for the identification of resistance mechanism as well as guiding the alternative treatment options with expensive drugs. In a clinical trial, the incorporating biomarkers, turnaround time for the test result is essential. It's very important in metastatic setting when the treatment decision should be made within a short time, as that alternative to the traditional approach of the centralized biomarker analysis. Academic centers adopted different strategy of the local testing and institutions, while the patients are still receiving the standard treatments. In order to efficiently and dynamically incorporate genomic data and assess to the value of the matching profile of patients hovering the unique genomic operations, clinical trial design for the diagnostics or the therapeutics should consider the time-limited steps into consideration. This is the optimal design of clinical trial demonstrated utility of the genetically-guided treatments. Let's panel the illustration plot for the tumor response and clinical benefits, such as a Weller for flat and a spider flat and a stream plot, as they're known well, and a historical base of trials of biomarker-driven control strategy. The adaptive study include a plan of unity to modify one or more specified element of the study design and hypothesis based on data analysis of study process. The prospective refers that the change was pre-planned and detailed and specified before the data were examined in a non-blind manner. The final objective of the adaptive studies is to learn from the accumulated data and apply what has been observed as soon as possible. The modifications that we plan in the written protocol can cover the broad range of possibility, including eligible criteria, proportion of the randomization, addition of the new treatment, and sample size. Adaptive study increased the efficiency of the traditional clinical trial by facilitating selection of the dose and reducing the patient's numbers exposed to the ineffective or the potentially toxicities, and precise catchways of sample size, which will reduce the duration of the course of the drug development. In the early developments, the adaptive studies enable the integration of the preclinical data in cooperation or information beyond traditional dose-limiting toxicity period. Findings from that trial still by increasing the likelihood accurately determining the benefit of the new treatment and quickly complying with the regulatory or statutory requirements. The cost can be reduced with early identification successful patients group, which leaves unnecessary treatment group out of the equation or determine the effect of those breakness more cheaply. One of the examples of the adaptive studies is the Ali's Popping Rule. In the case of the lack of efficacy, whether unacceptable toxicity and altering dose in schedule to improve the value toxicity profile. The recently adapted trial design, after the initial running phase, the ratio of patients randomly assigned to the expanded versus control arm changes from the standard one-to-one ratio to increase the proportion of the patient randomized to the arm having the better performance. The enrichment trial with adaptive design with predictive algorithms tied to the best match therapy are both very useful for the if multiple drug operations identify more than one agent. If only one drive genomic event decides that fight, investigators have selected among the various drugs with overlapping the cancer mode action with different activity. The NMA and FDA have recognized the validity of the adaptive clinical trial as a viable alternative strategy for the both pivotal and early clinical trials. The adaptive studies are generally compressed design with a separate cohort and one of separate investigation box. The railway agents are still little happens because the results are more difficult to interpret. The first one is the control of the type on errors as well as adaptive measures may introduce a bias, and it can provide information to patients in a sufficient price but comfortably way. This is just descriptions of the umbrella and the basket file. Umbrella trials, as in the two studies, multiple type therapy in the context of the single disease. However, firstly, the basket trial to study of the single target agents in a context of multiple diseases and multiple subtypes is quite different. And I'd like to introduce first an umbrella protocols. Umbrella protocols is a massive protocol for which the patients eligible is as defined by the hematite and is sophisticated according to the specific molecule operations matched to the different anti-cancer treatment. There are some several umbrella protocols has been conducted. Ispite 1 to breast cancers, bad one to the lung cancer, profitable and multi-recalling in the corrected cancers. And some studies across multiple solid tumors, such as the most famous study and NCI matched clinical trials. Ispite 1 and the SMM has successfully implemented a flexible design, which was allowed for the addition of the new arms. When the new data becomes publicly available by the others, remains fixed to the initial treatment algorithm until the study close. Multi-recall EU, S22, the funded project is molecular guided trials with a specific treatment strategy in the best new molecule to find a subtype of correct cancer. This is the NSA match trial and a study design in the panels, and then which was the development of the subprotocol activation timeline, the August 15, 2015, and the 10 subprotocols. And then one year later, the seven subprotocols has newly developed in the context of the NSA match trials. And the next year is 2016, May, and the seven more the subprotocol has been developed. And the battle for thirty, a biomarker integrated approaches on the target treatment for the lung cancer elimination 2 is biomarker-based of the bios mandatory prospective clinical trial to guide the treatment for the heavily treated metastatic non-small cell lung cancer patients. The right panel is just a schema of the battle to study. And the stage one, an activated random assigned by KRS mutation status, and success that is currently modeling of the biomarkers lackness. The stage two is we find that that random assignment best discovering markers of interest and allows me for purchase AKP inhibitor MK2260, AZV2644, back high semi, like a slot. That difference cohort is there. The basket trials include a patient with different hematite, with common molecule or The basket trials include a patient with different hematite was common molecule or tradition. Um, which are the same method system. And it is historically agonist approach to evaluate the targeting agents in molecular selected populations. And provided access to the experimental therapy for patients across the hematite. Which is potentially including the rare tumor. There at first basket player was the. Bamarafan has been a solid tumor, the hematologic malignancy is harboring the B rap three six hundred mutation. Which is evidence the activity of the Bamarafan in brief rap. They were at the brief six hundred E mutant, no small lung cancer as well as the bearing count in a certain CNS tumor. However, there are some representation with basket fires. Are the assumption that same mutation might have same impact regardless of the histology. And the presence of the variant of the unknown significance of which functions not previously then evaluated. The inherent focus to only one single operation. But when nowadays both type market analysis is the standard. Without control arm, it is very difficult to differentiate predicted or from the product value of the biomarker. One important caveat of basket trial is the possibility of the insufficient representation. Representation of patient with a certain tumor type having the interest in genetic alterations reading to the fortunate conclusion. And the basket trial should be certified by the histology taking consideration of reported frequency of each knowledge. The rarely rarely deal of the certain tumor biomarker combination make it impossible to conduct random trials. That's the class increasing using the providing clinical data necessary to supporting the trade ownership. But the May two thousand seventeen. F D A has granted with the X rate approval of the Pembro reismar for the treatment of adult pediatric patient with unresponsible order. Metastatic repertory tumors hovering the micro satellite instead of high in the vicious mismatch repair. That is the first FDA tissue agonist approved. Based on the tumor response rate and durability of the response in one hundred ninety four patients with M S H high the D. M M R tumors of course five uncontrolled open label single arm trial. The which was comparable to response rate of course a tumor. That is six percent incorrect the cancers versus forty six percent of working other cancer type. These are the presentation of the accuracy of the Pembro respiring patients and non correct or micro satellite instead of a high. The difference that this man's repair gene. The cancer patients in face to cannot one five S thirties. As in the well, the left panel shows the overall response rate, the comfort response of ten percent partial is twenty four five percent. Stable is eighteen percent. The right panel shows the best percentage change of what a plot. Many tumors, different types of tumors and the size of much refreshed. By the Pembro is not in a patient with M S H high that deficient. And second case was the approval of the Lala technique. That is the first in plus ten and truck inhibitors. And in November twenty eighteen for the adult and pediatric neurotropin propomycin receptor kinase and correct. The real in tumors. And the patients who have the antarctic even pass. The involve in the other face one in the pediatric scotface one to where the navigate base basket face to try us. The expanded one hundred twenty two patients integrate data set demonstrate A one over objective response rate. Eighty four percent of the responding patients and seventy three percent of the all patients remained on the Lalo technique. Were the underwent the cure for such sections. I can read Lala technique that showed the clinical benefits regardless of the human type and entration. Ice type giving practice. This are the treatment app that said the lot of threatening and the antarctic and practice cancers. And including adult and children. And overall response rate, whether the investigative assessment or the central assessment response rate eighty to the seventy five percent. The object response rate in eighty to seventy five percent. The right side panel as very striking remarkable the human break questions. Which was showing to the many different kind of the tumor disease and five cancers and so this is a coma. After initial tumor, sorry, run tumor right along. The glandular passion on the normal and breast cancer, many different. I'd like to bear short time the presentations and the basket of basket study. That's the example of the EU collaboration that's the claim with multi modular design. Basket of basket B O B study as the spearhead for the cancer core in Europe. The goal of the B O B study is to evaluate anti tumor activity of the max treatment in a small C C patients. The molecule is selected using the novel study design by international multi center approach. This composed the two part. The A part is I profilers allows molecular characterization upon the patient with methods we can solve the tumor using the. New profiling tool and a select more suitable patients. And B part was I basket and multi modular basket trial with a different cohort for the genomic is likely populations. And a pharmaceutical company sponsors some of specific treatment cohort and some. The benefit from the Estella's collaboration profile to promote the pharmacy sponsor prior. The B O B study to testify the treatments in a faulty disease setting that genetic. And testing and compressed by the government companion diagnostics. Based on the specific biomarkers in this genetic content, including the C T D N analysis in order to the select patients for any tested drugs in. Treatment efficacy. The broader genetic molecular and quality analysis facilitates the testing of feasibility. And the value of the whole accent sequencing clinical contest as well as development, the database for the strategic. Other patient population benefit for the rock with proportion. That is the design of the B O B platform sponsored by C C. And they that are the advanced logistic logistics that you know. Normally oriented clinical trial through the structures incorporate novel concept. And approaches and facility cooperation between academic side and diagnostic company and the pharmaceutical companies. Which is influence of the innovative clinical research strategy for the government target treatments in a numerous molecular operation setting. Reven by tightly connected between the expert in genetics, the translation science. And the clinical research with a profiling tool to assess the clinical benefit of targeted treatments. The B O B platform can bridge the existing the gap between the start discovering the baby and a transit. Translation of research and its application of the clinical research seven. I'd like to make the conclusions. And my presentations, the first one is concept of the phase one expansion cohort. The twice the basis steady and regulator of progress based on the long randomized file and tumor agonist of. Are established. However, we have challenges. The first one is technical limitation of monetary tax. And to logistically issue the patient of cool and clinical trials. And a click probably unsold the regulatory issues. And fourthly, and many mutation identified and just are either linked to the unobtained but would not probable by the contrary available treatment. And some we have a genetic heterogeneity and intra tumor and inter patient letters. And evolution over the time. Those are remains of the major obstacles in the precision medicine for the trial. But and the recently this acquiring tumor cells and C T D N detection technology. Will be the importance for the monitoring of the emergence of treatment resistant clones. And providing the efficient model of the individualized treatment. The clinical trial strategy such as adaptive design. Innovative endpoint and collaborative framework to the interrogate and the drug efficacy. Were we the key to the blessing in the precision medicines? I'd like to stop here. Thank you for paying attention in my presentation. Thanks, everybody.
I thank the organizers for giving me this wonderful opportunity to share our work on oncology clinical trials formation. I begin with the introduction. You know that modern medicine is a victim of its own success. And that is because sixty five percent of healthcare spending is because of technology. So how do we address this? We develop a world class voice processes that cost less than one U S dollar. And this is now exported from India to Singapore and United States. Today, we are in a world of personalized medicine and proficient oncology. And this also requires that the communication strategy. Should be personalized based on the patient's personality. And this is a chapter that we have written in this book that was brought out by Springer. Now we move on to diagnostic test. All of us in Asia know that some of the tests that have been certified and approved by regulatory authorities. In Western Europe or USA are based on Caucasian population. And they are not really applicable in the Asian population. And this has been proved many number of times and this is just one example. So what we did from India was develop the scoring system for early breast cancer. Which is called can assist breast can breast. And this divides the patients into two clear cast categories, low risk versus high risk. And please note that there is no intermediate risk category here. This has been validated in several centers in South countries. It has also been validated in Western Europe as well as United States. And what does this do? The low risk category is shown in blue, the red risk category is shown in the high risk category is shown in red. And when you look at early breast cancer patients, the total cohort or patients who are eligible for endocrine therapy. You can clearly see that the negative predictive value of this test is as high as ninety five percent. This test is also valid irrespective of the age of the patient. Oncotype D X has a different R S score for patients less than fifty years and more than fifty years. This is not the case with can assist. Can assist verse has been studied in more than thirty cities in India with more than two hundred and forty oncologists using this. We are able to identify two thirds of our patients as low risk. And these low risk patients are. Protected from unnecessary chemotherapy by a ninety one percent earlier. So this is the proof of the pudding of how valuable this test is. We now move on to chronic myeloid leukemia. And this is data from Tata Hospital of just under one thousand patients with a median age of thirty six years newly diagnosed chronic phase chronic myeloid leukemia. They were divided into into patients who received the original innovator immatinate that is G V A C. And patients who received the generic question. And you can see that the survival graphs are totally super impossible with a median survival of sixty months. Even the complete cytogenetic response is identical in both the group. Now let's look at women's cancer that is breast and survival cancer. This was a plenary lecture at ASCO from data from Tata Hospital. And you can see that hundred and fifty thousand individuals were divided for screening. Into a screening arm of seventy five thousand three hundred and sixty patients and a control arm of seventy six thousand one hundred and seventy eight. And use of visual inspection after application of acidic acid E I. Which costs less than one U S dollars was able to identify patients with cervical cancer early. So that we would be able to save life. This is data from non metastatic breast cancer at initial presentation, three centers, almost three thousand five hundred patients. Where the follow up of sixty six months, the five year overall survival shows ninety four point one one percent in the real world. This is metastatic breast cancer at initial diagnosis. Should they require local regional therapy in terms of modified radical mastectomy or no local regional treatment? And this is data that was published by Dr. Budweh. And again, you can see that the two graphs are totally super impossible as far as overall survival is concerned. In other words, overall survival does not get impacted or has no benefit of. Mastectomy in a patient who have breast cancer presents with metastatic. This is patients with cervical cancer state three B, eight hundred and fifty patients randomized to chemo radiotherapy versus radiotherapy alone. And you can see that here the blue line which is chemo radiotherapy is higher than the green line which is radiotherapy alone. Whether you look at five years disease free survival, you look at five years overall survival, both are highly statistically significant. This is data from cervical cancer stage one B, two, two A or three B, six hundred and thirty three patients. Three hundred and sixteen got neo adjuvant chemotherapy followed by surgery. Three hundred and seventeen patients were randomized to concomitant chemo radiotherapy. And he can here you can see that the blue line represents neo adjuvant chemotherapy followed by surgery. The orange line represents chemo radiotherapy. While the overall survival is same, the disease free survival is definitely better. With cisplatin based concomitant chemo radiotherapy. Now we move on to lung cancer. And way back in two thousand thirteen, we had published the ethnic. Uh, diversity of the incidence of V G F R mutation across the world. With the United States and Western Europe having the lowest incidence. India having an incidence of between thirty six and forty percent. And certain countries on the far east like Japan and Taiwan and Korea having as high as fifty percent. So also actionable mutations in lung adenocarcinoma comparing Caucasian population seen on your left. As opposed to the Indian population seen on your right, this was published in Analsa oncology in two thousand sixteen. And the interesting thing is that F G F R three mutations are seen as high as five percent in operation. And what is the significance of this? These are drug sensitive F G F R mutations as we published in Analsa oncology in two thousand seventeen. We have also looked at actionable activating oncogene of herb B two hurt to trans membrane and juxta membrane domain. In patients with lung cancer and this is another publication that was in the cancer set. Now we move on to T K I's versus T K I's plus. Combination chemotherapy in patients with lung cancer who have the E G F R mutation. And this was presented last year at ASCO. This was a one is to one randomization J F T F two fifty milligrams daily was given in both arm. In the study arm, they also had P M and Cabo followed by P M maintenance therapy. The orange line represents J F T M alone, the blue line represents J F T N A plus chemotherapy. And whether you look at progression free survival or overall survival. Highly statistically different, significant difference, the difference is widening and therefore this is a real difference. Now we move on to head and neck cancer. This is data on T one, T two oral cavity cancer patients. Do they require neck dissection only at the time of progression or when there is a therapeutic need? Or there is a need for elective neck dissection and this was published in New England Journal of Medicine, a prospective randomized study. Here you can see the red line is therapeutic surgery, the blue line is elective surgery. And again, you can see that overall survival as well as disease free survival was much better when we did elective next session. And this was seen across all the pre specified subjects. This is the O C A T study that is oral cavity adjuvant therapy study. And this was about weekly cisplatin, does it improve outcome? So you can see that in O C A T study. Using weekly cisplatin, the fire loco regional control as well as the fire overall survival was much better. With chemo radiotherapy as opposed to radiotherapy alone irrespective of what sort of radiotherapy. So addition of cisplatin is highly significant in this group of. We also published in J C O in two thousand eighteen about. The schedule of cisplatin in locally advanced head and neck cancer. A prospective phase three randomized study is one weekly cisplatin really necessary or three weekly is good enough. And here you can see the loco regional relax. The green line represents the weekly cisplatin, the dotted red line represents three weekly cisplatin. And you can clearly see that a schedule of cisplatin given every three weekly is definitely better in terms of preventing loco regional relax. Can we do something beyond cisplatin? And this was published in Cancer of randomized phase three trial comparing a monoclonal antibody, Nimatuzab. added to cisplatin based chemo radiotherapy versus cisplatin based chemo radiotherapy alone in locally advanced head and neck cancer. This was also one is to one randomization that the dose of nimatizab was two hundred milligrams. The dose of cisplatin was thirty milligrams per meter square. And follow up was weekly during chemo radiotherapy then three monthly for two years and then six months. Here again, you can see that the red line is the combination with the monoclonal antibody. The blue line, sorry, the green line is only chemo radiotherapy. And whether you look at progression free survival, the overall survival or the local regional control in all these aspects, adding the monoclonal antibody made a big difference for a patient. Is there a role in technically unresectable tumors? And this was published in Oral Oncology, the value of neo adjuvant chemotherapy. And you can see that addition of neo adjuvant chemotherapy was allowing forty percent of patients to undergo resection with curative. And I think this is a really true value of neo adjuvant chemotherapy in disease which is very common in Asia and especially in. Finally, for the last part of my presentation, we move to metronomic chemotherapy. And this data is not only from Mumbai Tata Hospital, but also from a rural center which is about six and a half hours driving distance away from the city of Mumbai. So it is too in the rural medical center there. The first data that was published in J C O was in triple negative breast cancer. And you can see that in this retrospective study, a three year overall survival was hundred percent for those who received metronomic maintenance therapy as opposed to only fifty four point three percent in the observation group. And clearly this is highly statistically significant. Now this is low cost oral metronomic chemotherapy versus intravenous cisplatin in patients with recurrent metastatic or inoperable head and neck cancer. On the left side is the survival graph, on the right side is the quality of life. The red lines represent metronomic chemotherapy, the blue lines represent intravenous cisplatin. And clearly you can see that metronomic chemotherapy is better in terms of survival as well as in terms of quality. This is triple negative metronomic therapy in really bad patients, platinum refractory, early failure oral cancer. Here the mitotricid was used weekly in combination with helicopic twice a day and earlotin. And you can see that the response rate in this highly refractory group of patients was as high as forty three percent, which is very important. So ladies and gentlemen, I conclude by saying that if we make a half hearted attempt, we will get only half a car which is totally useless. So the outcome, the result is commensurate with the attempt that we do. We do not want to do a study where our conclusion is that results are promising. Toxicities are acceptable and more studies are required. And I wish that the Asian Oncology Society in Asia can take the lead to ensure that we are producing more and more such landmark trials for our oncology patients.
Oh, thank you three speakers for your excellent talks with your new information. So because time is of a Q and A is limited, I myself will ask one question for each speaker's party. Then I will accept questions from audiences if they come. So please answer this step by step. So first of all, I'd like to ask to Professor Yun Ju Ban. I almost understand the future direction of cancer clinical trial designs and understand several keywords, important keywords, including digitalization, patient centric trials, application of precision medicine and adaptive design. Among them, I'm very impressed about the patient centric trials because this type, this new type of trial design hasn't has not been experienced by myself. Could you tell about the good examples of the previous patient centric trials? Or will it be started from now or in the future? Please answer this point, Professor Ban.
Yes, actually in the past, patients or participants were perceived, but now they want to actively participate in clinical trials. So in Western countries, some companies or some investigators are trying patient centric trials partly. But in Asia, it is still remote from those of those kind of approach, but we have to be more patient centered in the future. For example, we make patient informed consent. But at this time, most patients cannot understand, fully understand what it means in the informed consent. So we can ask the opinion about draft informed consent to be more patient friendly. So we can start me in that way, I think.
Oh, I see. Thank you very much. This type of new patient century trials will makes, let's say, wide application of future clinical trial. Thank you. We are expecting this type of things. Thank you very much. So next question is for Professor Jun Hyung Cam.
Yeah.
Can you see that? Okay. So you can focus on the importance of adaptive studies with umbrella trials or basket trials in precision medicine era with good example. I am sure this type, this type of trials should save the total period and the total cost. But I think someone is still wondering if the resulting efficacy or resulting safety data is reliable or not. So do you think we still need a conventional R C T randomized controlled trial after approval the drug through this type of adaptive trial design? Could you answer?
Maybe, yes, that's good questions. Maybe I think that's case by case, but the most of case and if we succeed in the good result from the small cohort in umbrella, the basket clinical trial, if you have some positive data, probably regulatory authorities to request and need requires pretty the more solid data from the randomized phase clinical trial and that's something else. That's why the probably conditioned approver strategy will be applied in this kind of the clinical study. It's just, we just wanted to the whether this drug is working and then some specific genetic alteration, patient cohort, that's the the suggesting, the only suggestion. But the more patients is needed in the circumstance. But the very rare case of the genetic alterations and we have to think about what are you going to do to get the more the convinced evidence, probably real word, the data can be the one of the research to get the the solid confidence, confidence to get the clinical evidence.
Thank you very much. So I think the total period to approval will be shortened, but I think the final solid data by randomized control trial will prolong the, how to say, a final strong evidence, right? So yeah, right, okay. So thank you very much. It is very important message from you. Thank you. So final question is for Professor Parish Parik. Could you see my voice? Okay. Doctor Parik? There? I have one question, Professor Parik. Parik is not here? Oh. Probably he is not here unfortunately. So Doctor Khan and Doctor Ban, do you have any question to each other?
And I'd like to the one suggestion or the one comments and the umbrella study and then basket clinical trial, whatever. And probably the Korean situation is not much different from the Asian countries, just like Japan. And those kind of clinical trial, if they easily underway undergone, definitely N G S is popular, but however, the N G S the turnaround time and also the the expense is more highly expensive. And it's not the fully applicable in the clinical situation. That's a very important barrier to conduct to the those kind of clinical trials. That's why probably in the Korea, the regulation is the change is very important to have some more popular to the N G S and to get the evidence from those kind of the clinical trials. The funding source is very important, however, the regulation is very important. Maybe I thought that those kind of the clinical trials will they come together, gather and getting the more data will be the big data and then get the evidence and get give the clinical evidence to the next population of the cancer patients.
Thank you. A good comment.
I'd like to.
So please, Dr. Givana?
Yes, I'd like to comment on the ethnic difference between Asian patients versus Western patients.
Yes.
As you know, Asian patients, especially in Gaza with Gaza cancer survive longer than Western peoples. So if you have a very strong biomarker for patient selection, I think you need one global trial. One example is hurt to positive positivity. So if you do a clinical trial in hot to positive gas cancer, then you really the just one global trial. But if there is no strong biomarker for patient selection in Gaza cancer, you better do a separate trial, one in Asia, another in Western countries. It's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's again important point. So Doctor Ban or Doctor Khan, do you know the reason why FGFR three driver mutation is so frequent in India? Because Doctor Parik is not here. I'm familiar with the FGFR three driver mutation is frequently observed in Indian population but not in Caucasian or Japanese population. Do you know the reason why?
I'm sorry, I have no idea about FGFR three. For FGFR two in Gaza cancer, the frequency was a little more frequent in Western countries compared to Korea or Japan, Asia, no. But in regard to FGFR three, I have no idea about.
Okay, thank you. So anyway, is there any question from audience? No, at all. So thank you very much, two speakers again. I will appreciate for your excellent presentation. Thank you very much. Now I will.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye. Thank you. Goodbye.